... to order, and please note attendance, thank you. Please join me for the flag salute.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see everyone here tonight. Some administrators back, always a good feeling. Okay, consent agenda, do I have a motion for approval? Few items on it.
You have a motion for approval?
Is there a second?
I second.
Moving and seconded to approve the consent agenda, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda passes. First audience with visitors. I'm gonna read a little blurb, and then if anyone wants to come up and address the board, they can. Welcome to the regular business meeting of the Silver Falls School Board. We are glad you are here, and welcome you to address the board at this time. Please be certain to sign in before you present. In order to ensure equity amongst speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. A second audience with visitors will occur later in the agenda specific to discussion and action items of this meeting. Would anyone like to come up and speak? Nope, okay, we'll move on. Discussion items, we only have one tonight, and that is the business of filling Todd White's vacant board seat for Zone 6. We have three people who applied. The timeline to apply closed August 1st. And we have Danette Wernett, Sheldon Schneider, and Jonathan Edmonds. And so we're going to... Danette wasn't able to make it tonight or call in. So both Sheldon and Jonathan are here, so we're gonna have them come up and talk and present a... They can do their presentation and answer questions in a little bit. But I'm gonna read something that Danette sent in for us to read to the public tonight.
Dear Silver Falls School Board members, as a parent and taxpayer, I am concerned about our district and seek to serve the cause on behalf of Zone 6. The quality of our schools and the money funneled into them have a direct impact on every pocket in the district, and more importantly, on the shaping of upcoming generations of community leaders. I have a solid reputation for integrity and advocacy for my community. I am level-headed with an open-minded, fact-based, and collaborative approach to problem-solving. My experience includes program management, community outreach, child advocacy, education, rural neighborhood watch program, and enforcement of government regulations. I am fiscally conservative, active in the community, and committed to fostering success for every child within this district. The current board has tackled a number of tough decisions with more challenges still to be overcome. The board must work with a limited budget and authority to balance a range of district needs. Every school in the district faces challenges, including an abundance of facilities needs, state and federal mandates for key educational benchmarks, and hurdles such as having to meet basic child needs so that they are ready to learn. Often strong and conflicting perspectives and priorities are held by the community administration, staff, and board members, all of which must be taken into account. The board must make decisions by weighing those varied points of view against facts from specialized professionals. The board cannot effectively operate within its mission if it does not hold itself accountable to the ethical and moral standards of its community. Every member must earn the trust and respect of the community and all levels of district staff if it is to engage them in the sharing of ideas and the formulation of solutions to tough issues. If chosen, my commitment would include strengthening these connections by attending parent-teacher club meetings, school events, and community functions, especially to hear the voices of my neighbors throughout Zone 6. Also important would be to keep a pulse on feedback from social media and actively engage with my neighbors from South Mulholland to Scotts Mills. I thank the board and all in attendance for your time and consideration of me as a candidate for the Zone 6 seat. Respectfully, Danette Wernett.
So that's what Danette submitted. We'll move on. Sheldon, would you want to come up? Do you have a few words to say? And then we can ask questions if anybody has questions. We have your applications in our board packets tonight.
I need to sign in.
Yeah, go ahead, just so we have record of everybody. Just introduce yourself and what you want to tell us.
My name's Sheldon Schneider. I'm a resident of Zone 6, obviously. I live out on Meridian Road, have a small farm. Fourth-generation family from the Silverton, Mount Angel area. Went to Butte Creek Hup School. Graduated from Silverton High School down on Schlerer Street. Went to Shamakata Community College. I have a degree in manufacturing engineering. I started working for Shamakata in about 1995 on a part-time basis as an adjunct instructor. 2001, I went full-time for my program. Senior instructor, program chair. I sit on a couple of committees at the college. Grandparent, I have a granddaughter who goes to Butte Creek. I have a couple other grandkids that they live out of the area. I have to brag on this. My wife and I just celebrated our 32nd wedding anniversary on August 8th, so pretty happy about that.
Congratulations.
It was a big event. To know me is to love me. She should get an award. Anyway, I can't really think of anything else off the top of my head. I'd love to serve on the board other than that. I would have to agree with previous applicants' statements on some of the things that were said. I'm available. I want to be available to the constituents in that area. I believe that open communication and transparency are important. However, there are certain venues that shouldn't be used on. So I think that's all I have to say, unless you folks have some questions.
What did you say at the end there? I didn't...about certain venues?
Certain venues, social media.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, questions for Sheldon?
I got one question. So are you looking for maybe the...filling the vacancy for the short term? Or after the vacancy concludes, are you looking to run for the next term?
My intention 18 months ago was to run in June 2019.
Sheldon, what do you see as some of the main issues? I know you did this in your application for the audience and just to refresh our minds. What do you see as some of the major issues?
Budget, of course, is always gonna be at the top of the list. Make tax dollars work for different areas that have the needs within the school district. One of the larger issues I see is our growing demographic of families moving in. And how do we best accommodate those families? They're gonna have children. And we're gonna have to have facilities to accommodate these young people. So that's one of the things I see is it's gonna be an ongoing, future issue. I'm sure it's an issue right now for you folks.
Okay.
Yeah, I just was interested in your connection with Shamakata and the idea of CTE and our school district. Do you have any...I don't have a specific question, just thoughts on that?
Just thoughts on it? I'm a very firm advocate of career technical education. I went through it, it was quite successful. We have a beautiful facility at the college that just went up three years ago. One of the things that I would like to see is an expansion of CTE at the high school level, personally. That's been something I've believed in for 25 years. I was out in the industry market for 14 years and was a supervisor for a robotic shop in Corvallis. And that was in the 90s. And we were so desperate for qualified machinists. And that's just not machinists. It's welders, it's construction, you can go down the line. Unfortunately, a lot of baby boomers my age were retiring. And there's not a lot of folks coming up to fill our ranks. That's good and bad. For my students, it's great. Placement is almost immediate. The wages are high, the benefits are high. So as far as career technical, I'm a firm believer in... Did that answer?
Yeah, yeah. I totally agree with everything you said.
I kinda have a follow-up on that one. On your application, one of the issues you put was higher education. A strong proponent of higher education. A deep-seated passion in many opportunities for college within Oregon and the Aliment Valley. I feel this is an untapped resource for many students that need to be promoted through alignment and open dialogue by all members within the education system to young people. By...in the higher education part, do you mean all aspects of that? Or are you thinking four-year universities? Or what...could you explain that a little more? When I read that, I first thought of, you know, four-year universities.
Right.
That doesn't always line up in our community, especially with the career techs.
Yeah, I'm a proponent of both. There's some folks that are wired for four-year school, and there's some folks that aren't. I have to admit, when I graduated, I would not have made a good four-year student. Career technical is something I kind of fell into. When I say that, I mean a broad-based situation.
Yeah, okay.
And I have to say, it's a little slanted from Shamakata since I'm a faculty member there. I feel that Shamakata, at times, could get in trouble for this, could do better promoting outside the Salem Kaiser School District.
Have you visited the Salem Kaiser CTE program?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be interesting.
I helped advise some of the layout on some of it. Did that answer?
Oh, for sure, yeah.
So the whole range of things.
The whole range of things. There's many opportunities.
But then, schools like Shamakata can funnel kids right into those career tech opportunities.
Correct. And, you know, we could do a better job at our end at the college of exposing children to that, young people. Getting them in there to see the things. My shop area alone, I teach computer-aided machining. And I have just a little over a million dollars worth of CNC equipment at our disposal. So we're one of the premier junior college facilities on the West Coast. And that's an untapped resource for any high school in this area. So I really would like to see that promoted more. Even the welding program, the engineering program, the drafting program. So coming at it from that community college angle and being so close, less than 12 miles away, I think that could be something that could be better steered tomorrow in as well.
Any other questions? No?
I just wanted to ask you about facilities. You have on here declining or inadequate facilities and equipment. Open dialogue with voters as well as fellow board members to the various possibility of solutions. What is best for the student and the district foremost, but also be fiscally conscious of funding and its use and application towards buildings and maintenance. So we've had lots of conversations about facilities. And I just wanted to get a more detailed explanation of what your vision is and what you work for.
I'm not as well-versed as you folks in all aspects of that. From my perception, we have some aging buildings within the Silver Falls School District. The decisions need to be made. Do you renovate? Do you replace? Is it time for another bond? These are all hard choices and hard decisions. And I guess that's kind of the angle I was coming up from, from that. The other thing is, so many times, and some of this is from my work experience, we will put up new facilities, but there's not a lot of thought given to the maintenance and the upkeep down the road. And those all have to be factors in the planning process. So I guess that's kind of what I was referring to. It's gotta be a global package when you think about these things.
So you're talking about long-term planning. When you're in the planning phase of your facilities, look down the road.
Yeah, Building 20 on our Salem campus, I'm the only original person left that was in the original planning stages 10 years ago. So everybody else is retired. Lucky. Anyway.
Okay, thank you.
That was Kyle Microsco.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
One other quick one. A lot of times when people think of running for the board, they...and I don't want to make this negative, but sometimes people come in with an agenda on their mind. Something like, "I'm gonna come in and change this," or "I'm gonna change this." Any agendas, any?
No hidden agendas.
No hidden agendas?
No hidden agendas. My perspective of this position is to look out for the students in the school district and help make decisions as a group as to what's best for all.
Anything else? No? Okay, thank you, Sheldon.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Jonathan Edmonds.
Hi.
Hi.
So, yeah, I'm Jonathan Edmonds. You've got my application, so you know a lot. I'll add a little bit to it. I grew up in the area. I've lived in the Markham area most of my life. I have a IDA reform out there that we just ran hazel nuts in a few years ago. My kids go to Butte Creek and Silverton High and now Western Oregon. So, you know, kids kind of at different stages, ages nine to 20 currently. Have been active for a long time in the school district, in the Butte Creek School itself. Served as PTT president for about 15 years. And we did a lot of stuff while I was there, including but not limited to becoming a national nonprofit. So I sort of let us through that. I do all the finances, have historically done all the finances for end-of-year filings with the state and federal government, things like that. You know, great working relationship with the teachers, with Captain Palmer. He was there most of the time that I was doing that. And, you know, have a good understanding of what the parents need, the kids need, the teachers need, administration need. You know, sort of catch it all. I've been active as well on different board task forces. I was on the Boundary Commission several years ago as Bethany was closing and Monitor was closing, things like that. So we were talking about a lot of things there. And more recently was on the task force put together to try to figure out how to put a bond forward that might actually pass after Eugene Field failed the first time. We did make a recommendation to float another bond. It was floated, although it did not match our recommendation, and it did fail. So that's good. So, you know, I've been active there. I've been part of budget discussions. I don't think I've ever been on the budget task force or the budget committee here at the district. But I certainly have been in discussions for budgetary items at the Butte Creek Grade School over the years. So pretty familiar with all that. One of the things I think I can bring is an awareness of the community that I live in and sort of where the pulse is there and sort of some of the things that have historically happened at the district level that have, I don't think, come across the way they were intended to people that lived maybe at the rural K-8 areas or grew up out there. So, you know, I sort of bring an awareness of that, probably much like Sheldon, actually. You know, kind of lived out there, kind of grew up out there, know a lot of the folks in the area. You know, I'm passionate about trying to do the right thing. I too have already sort of planned on running, so this is not a sort of jump in. Again, you guys can...you know, you've got all the rest of my info. I don't know, you probably have some specific questions maybe.
Questions for Jonathan?
He actually already addressed the one question I was gonna ask the same thing he asked of Sheldon, so appreciate that.
Jonathan, you said, the last thing you said there was things that come down from the district level that kind of are...I forget how you phrased it, but the perspective of the outline of like the...
Right, I mean, there's a perception.
Can you give an example of that? Because I know that, you know, I know some of that stuff dates way back to unification and all that kind of stuff.
Right, that goes way back.
So can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure, well, the first thing I'll say is that I think that the community schools, in fact, I think all the schools, and it's not just the K-8 schools, but maybe slightly more so. But the schools are sort of still the glue that binds a community together, right? It used to be, you know, churches, sort of people established around those, but that's...it's very different now. Communities have changed, very diverse, not everybody... But the schools are still that glue out in those rural areas especially. But I think probably still so for the schools in town. And so I think what ends up happening is when you have, let's say, budget discussions or things happen, you know, you start losing positions, counselors, music teachers, things like that, start disappearing. There's not great...there hasn't been historically great communication out to those schools. Those schools historically have always had those things, and now they're disappearing. So people say, "Well, how come that's happening?" And I think it's more a matter of the communication barrier more than whether it makes sense, right? So I can look at it objectively. I can talk with people that I know on the board. I can talk with Captain Lando or Captain Palmer. I can get a better understanding because I sort of know who to reach out to. I don't think in general the communication's been fantastic. I think decisions are made often for all the right reasons, but they have the wrong perception. One just classic example, right? I mean, there's the big safety fence that was put up in front of Butte Creek years ago, right? Several years ago. I don't know how many hundred, thousand, tens of thousands of dollars, whatever that cost, right? At the same time, there's a bathroom sink in the upper wing that's like falling off the wall, right? I mean, so, you know, I mean, there's just... There's these perceptions that they're not really asking people what they want, they're just telling them what they need, right? Does that help?
So Jonathan, you addressed this a little bit in your application, but can you elaborate on how your professional career would inform how you would interact on the board?
Sure. Well, one of the things I have to do in my career is collaborate a lot with a bunch of different people. I'm at a level I manage about 30 different people. I have a budget of about $3 million. So a lot of things have to take place. A lot of people you have to talk to. And I'm also an HR manager, right? So I have to deal with things that happen. And a lot of strange things happen. I'm sure employees...but this stuff happens. You guys have to talk about it. You have to get legal advice, right? Law enforcement can get involved. I've had people arrested that worked for me. I've had people die that worked for me. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that can happen, right? And so my career at Xerox, of which I'm a software engineering manager, you know, has given me a lot of opportunity, I think, to learn how to really understand that everybody's a unique person. There's not any one size fits all that works in general. I mean, there are rules, there are laws, there are policies. But when it comes to dealing with people and helping them to succeed, it's a different recipe for everybody. And that experience...I've really grown a lot since I started managing people because I used to be very black and white, you know? It either was or wasn't good, et cetera, et cetera. That's all changed in the last maybe 12 years that I've been managing people. You get a different perspective. So I guess that's how that would influence me, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? Any agendas, Jonathan? Hidden agendas?
Hidden agendas, no.
I mean, I know... I don't know if people are even...would even tell me or not, but I have to ask.
You know what? No, there aren't. I listed several things I thought were priorities, right? So maybe those would be things that are on my agenda. I do think that a further maintenance problem is massive and has to be addressed, has to be. I mean, I see it, hugely see it. I don't know what the right answer is. I know passing bonds is hard because of the geographical and demographic issues after unification. I think those made that harder. I really believe that. How we fix it, I don't know. I think there's things I'd like to explore. I even listed an idea that I don't even know is possible. But there are, I think, things that we should... I'd like to know more about. Maybe you guys would talk about that.
One more chance, questions?
Actually, you know what? One other question here. So what's your take on board members' use of social media?
Funny, you should ask. I don't use social media. And as a result, I may not be the right one to ask. I certainly don't think that I would advocate going out there with information that maybe you shouldn't, like leaking information. I don't think you should go out there with disparaging remarks about the board members. I don't think you should go out there and try to backhanded slide things into the public sphere when you're too afraid to say it perhaps up here in front of them on camera. So I guess that would be my answer is I... But I'm not a user particularly, so... Y'all looked me up on Facebook, you probably didn't find much stuff.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Jonathan.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, like I said before, this is our only discussion item tonight. And it's an action item later in the meeting. I know it's kind of a weird situation with the candidates sitting out there and us supposed to discuss, you know, pros and cons or whatever, or different ideas. But then, when we get to the... Just to kind of go over the process a little bit, when we get to the action item, we will have someone nominate, if you will, one of the three candidates. And we will vote on that. And if that person doesn't get the majority of the vote, we will ask for another nomination.
Can we agree to discuss enough so that that is not...that's a more...I don't know how to say it. Comfortable situation at the end? Like we know where we're...we have a consensus going?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I would prefer to discuss until we have some kind of, yeah, direction instead of just throwing it out there at the end.
Yeah, well, yeah, for sure. I think we need to discuss. I'm just saying, if, you know, if something else, something happens where the person doesn't get a majority vote, we go to the next nomination, so... And there was one other thing I was gonna say, but it slipped out of my list.
You're welcome.
Must have been very important. So discussion on the three candidates. Any ideas?
I don't think we can make a bad decision. I think that we have three great candidates. Thank you to the two that are in the audience and Danette. It's awesome that we have community members willing to step up. We have three very strong candidates. They are...they are...have so much education and background and being a part of the community for so long. It's really nice to see and for applying to volunteer for this position. I...we're gonna have to discuss this a lot because we really do have good people here.
Yeah.
And I mean, how do you tell... Wow, it's...I might have to sit on this for a few minutes. I feel like...me too.
Yeah, it's too bad we don't have three positions available.
Yeah, I agree.
So that makes it a little bit difficult. I don't think any one of them would be a bad candidate. So just so they know, it is kind of awkward sitting up here and... But it's not the first time being awkward up here, so...
Or it won't be the last.
You know, I think what impresses me too is that every candidate brings an understanding of what's involved with being a board member, part of the community. They've come up and they've shown that they have a deep understanding of the issues at hand, what we go through. And, you know, I truly am amazed at the talent of those that are willing to participate, especially at the tail end of a four-year term. The speed at which they're gonna have to come up and... and gain some momentum, I think, is important. But I think they've all shown that ability to do so rather quickly. Can we just do a roll tape for seniors?
The one thing about this position, it is just for a year. So the election will open up next... I guess it'll be next May when we'll vote on this zone position again. So who we appoint now will just serve until next... The end of next June unless they run again and are elected. So if the other two who don't get appointed are still interested in running, they could run a campaign next spring and have the opportunity to do that. So, saying that, I... Both Jonathan and Sheldon have great strengths. Jonathan's been around a long time. He knows the community, knows the school. He's been involved in the school, in the school out there and the district level for a long time. He hasn't lately, but he's come to a lot of board meetings and was very involved, you know, a few years ago with different things and different issues and stuff like that. So Sheldon is in education. He's a Shemekha'da guy. He knows his stuff, and he's very willing to serve and very willing and has grandkids in the district. So that's a big investment right there. So it's a tough... Like, I agree with everybody else, two strong candidates, so. It's not an easy thing.
Yeah, for Danette, well, I just wanted to say too about Sheldon's CTE perspective, I think is really... Could be very valuable for our board. I think that that... Yeah, I think it could be extremely valuable for us. I think Jonathan's bond experience in the past could be very valuable to us as well. I wrote a few things down from Danette's application because she didn't have a chance to talk to us. But she talked about being fact-based, making fact-based decision-making, being mission-focused and outcome-focused, and that's something for our strategic mission or strategic plan that I think are important. She talked about process and procedure, legal considerations. Jonathan also talked about legal considerations. So those are some things that are kind of going through my mind as far as strengths go.
I think I have to agree. Some of the things that I wanted to point out about Jonathan was, boy, he's immersed himself in quite a bit with the district. Boundary Task Force, Eugene Field Task Force. He was Creek PTT president for 15 years. He's had kids come and go, you know, out of that school and has seen changes happen over and over. And he's seen a lot, you know, with money that's, you know, budgets that are coming down to the principal and what happens with that as they... The other thing I was impressed with down below is, what do you see as the key issues facing the district? He's got constant financial pressure from hirs, confounding statewide mandates. You know, these kinds of... This kind of language indicates to me that he really is educated on a lot of these things that are happening at the board level that we have to make decisions on. And I mean, the deferred maintenance burdens at nearly all our schools. Bond, passing bonds. I just... All of them stand out, but this one really stands out to me because of the language that he uses. This is all the language that we use up here and that we have to talk about and make decisions on. So I, you know... Deals with other companies, complex legal issues, cultures from a variety of countries, multimillion-dollar budgets. Yeah. Just wanted to point that out. But they're all good.
Yeah. You know, I'll say one thing that Sheldon did say, which caught my attention real quick, is that not only do we need to make the right decisions, but what is the lasting impact of those decisions? And how does it affect all facets of the community in the district? I mean, that's very important that we need to be making these decisions for the right reasons and making sure they are the right decision for years to come. I think that was pretty strong impact, I guess, impact statement.
I agree. That's impressive and smart and something that I appreciate as well.
When Shelley was reading some of the stuff on Jonathan's application, one other thing on that that caught my attention was an increasing rate of behavioral issues among our children.
Right.
And that's something that's beginning, that's going to be a major thing that all the schools are dealing with more and more all the time. So, I mean, that kind of caught my eye a bit.
And we've had multiple discussions, you know, with social and emotional.
We're going to be having a lot.
And we're implementing curriculum specifically for that.
So that just caught my eye on Jonathan's also.
Yeah.
But Sheldon, okay.
At the board conference that we went to run, and I went to, that was a major thing throughout, was that issue. That might be our number-one issue. Well, facilities too. But that is an important thing to note. Thank you.
Well, I just want to reiterate again that if one of you isn't picked, don't be disappointed and disgusted.
Yeah.
There's lots of things to be volunteering for and with, so.
Very true.
Yeah, I would encourage you to stay involved because that's how this district runs, is by volunteers. Except the money we get.
That was good.
It's hard to find a budget for them, yeah. So.
When you said not to be disappointed, to be thankful is the first thing that came to my mind.
Oh, no.
I agree with Erv.
Yeah.
Take the community.
If I can piggyback off of Erv's thoughts too, regardless of if you're chosen to participate with the board or elected, just the, what I've read here, what we've discussed here on paper, you can have just a big of impact, if not bigger, by participating in our meetings, coming to the public, sharing your thoughts, and really helping to direct and drive this district. I mean, what you bring to the table is amazing. So it would be a shame if this is all we hear of you tonight. So I definitely would encourage and consider it to please participate. It's refreshing.
Other discussion? Again, this is an action item later tonight.
Do you have issues that I think are important?
No, I believe in both of these men, and, yeah. So they're spot on.
And we also have Danette.
We have Danette.
Danette, yes, that's right. I'm sorry.
So it sounds like Shelley is leaning towards... Do you have a leaning? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Yeah, I think I'm leaning.
We could, I would suggest that we wait till we get to the action item to discuss our leanings a little bit.
Oh, so we can do that then?
Yeah, we can discuss more then.
Okay.
Oh, good.
That'll give us a little time to think about it, and we can, yeah, we can discuss more. Can we discuss right away, or do we have to have a motion?
No, you can discuss first.
Okay.
Okay, great.
And just for informational purposes, in talking with Andy earlier, whoever gets appointed to this position will be sworn in in our September regular meeting?
No, on the August 20th work session.
Oh, one week away? Okay.
We're starting right away. Get ready.
Yeah, we have an August 20th work session and an August 28th work session. Does that change anybody's mind? No, just kidding. Okay, anything else before we move on? Okay, we will discuss this and talk about it in a few minutes. Any other discussion items? Okay. Administrator and staff reports. Andy, preparation for 2018-19 school year timeline for strategic planning process.
Yeah, two important topics. I wanted to be certain I briefly discussed each. First of all, it's an exciting time of year for us administratively. All administrators are back in their buildings now. The secretaries returned today, and the hum of the school year is beginning to be profoundly present. So lots of exciting things happening. We just spent, as the board knows, three days earlier this week with the administrative team with our annual retreat in service. Really spent a lot of good time discussing a variety of things in the school district. I do want to comment that, just straight out of the gate, we... Well, first of all, the theme for the retreat was "Adapt and Overcome." And it's an interesting title, but it's one that I want to share with you simply because we started off the retreat by discussing unfortunate but very fortunate situation in Thailand with the cave rescue. And really, I use that as an opportunity to create some parallels to education about the importance of every person on a team. Ours just happens to be a 475-person team in this school district. The importance of each of the administrators, the importance of everyone doing their job, their role, the specific tasks, and the importance of really working collaboratively in order to achieve success. And I think it was well-received generally by administrators to be able to create those kind of parallels. So good start to the week, lots of energy in your administrative team. And in what other occupation can you have a fresh start? Well, there are probably a few, but very few, a fresh start like this to the school year. Jennifer, you know, I mean, every year it's a blank slate in many ways. And so we're excited to do that. And then, of course, your role, I have a variety of things, some that you've touched on here in the last few minutes related to what's going to happen in an upcoming year. You're going to be talking about facilities again. You're going to be talking about a curriculum again. You're going to be talking about strategic planning, which is the second topic I want to address. You have a timeline in front of you. We have Jerry Colonna secured, who is the consultant that you used five years ago, four years ago, to develop your current strategic plan. And Jerry is an incredible resource. We are fortunate to be one of the few school districts that Jerry has actually done a repeat performance. So he helped develop it four years ago. He's going to help develop the next one and put you in a position of being able to direct that action all along the way. You'll see that I'm really excited about the October 16th and 17th community forums and focus groups. There'll be a lot of effort put into this, but we're going to target specific groups as we did four years ago, a variety of groups that we'll meet over those few days. We'll also have two open public forums where we'll meet at two different sites within the school district in order to get plenty of public feedback with prompts as well in order to help us revise the strategic plan. Administrators will be giving a lot of input into that, and then you will receive it. You'll have time to get additional input, public input. You'll be able to modify and adjust as you believe as a board is necessary with final action occurring by next April. So valuable document. Looking forward to that. We're ready to go. We will be ready to go. Excuse me. Sorry, guys. We will be ready to go. I'm excited for the new school year. That's it.
Okay.
I just wanted to say thank you for sending the agenda for your three-day retreat. That was very informative.
Yeah.
Other questions for Andy? Okay. 2017-18 food services report. So Anne Earle, the XO.
Good evening, school board. Thank you for having me here tonight. Catherine, sorry that she can't be here tonight, but you all understand. I know you got the message.
Give us our condolences.
Thank you, I will. Yeah, she did come back to... She came in today for a little while, but it was rough, so.
No.
She'll be... She'll do her job for sure, but she's just, you know, any kind of a tragedy like that just takes time, so.
We'll tell her she's in our thoughts.
Thank you, thank you, I will. All right, so I want to start off with, I have... You got some my newsletter, but I wanted to put it up on the board so everybody can see it and enjoy it. I want to start off with talking to you, sharing with you a little bit about our summer lunch program that has been going good this year. I have a great team that has been going out to the parks and the schools every day all summer, feeding kids. We have had, our average daily participation this year has been 140 children that we've been feeding between Coolidge Park, Mark Twain, and Scott's Mills. Anyway, that participation is down slightly from last year, but we're not done with the program yet, so it still could get... You know, we could get a few more numbers. Our migrant program and our summer school program at the high school was a little bit later starting this year. So they still have this week and next week before they're finished. So I won't have total numbers till the end of the summer. But the... I did a little research finding out because I was curious why our numbers were down a little bit this summer. And I found out that Mount Angel started a summer lunch program for the first time this year. And so they are drawing about 50 children a day. And so that would cause reason for us to understand why we have about 40 less than what we were doing last summer. Anyway, so good for them, bad for us. But it's okay. We encourage, we love any sites that open up programs for kids to eat in the summertime is great, anyway. So we just have some pictures of kids at the park enjoying themselves. And we do have, on the 20th, which is next Monday, Republic Services is going to come out and do a show and tell that day at the park, at Coolidge Park. They're going to bring some garbage trucks, and then they're going to talk, teach kids about recycling and the benefits to the environment and the community, and let them look at the garbage truck and see how the garbage truck works and, you know, let them climb inside of it. And so that'll be a fun activity for the kids. So, that being said... So this year at Robert Frost, it's kind of my... My office is there, but that has nothing to do with it. Our lead cook there is a phenomenal lead, and she's very, very engaged with her students. And so we just had some fun pictures. She has gotten the kids involved in working in the kitchen and just helping out. And so we do, the kids that want to come in and work in the kitchen have to sign up, and then we give them a little class. And then they have to actually pass the class before they can sign up to actually help in the kitchen or help serve at lunchtime and breakfast. And so it's become so popular that we actually have to turn kids away because they love coming in and helping, you know, helping serve at breakfast and lunchtime, and just they love being engaged with food service program and Linda. And Linda's just a great cook, anyway. And she just has done such a great job with all the kids there. So this is what they did. At the end of the year, she did a little party. We did a party for them, the kids, and she gave all of them little treats and stuff. So it was just a fun way to end the school year with at Robert Frost. So as we kind of closed out this school year, we had, we were... I think Therese from Butte Creek kind of talked about it at her last meeting, or the last presentation, about their green status at Butte Creek. And so to help them just continue with that status and to move forward with their recycling program, we worked with Clackamas County. And we were a Clackamas County recycling program. And we were able to get a $2,100 grant from Clackamas County to move to a milk dispenser versus cartons. And so we're going to, and that helps their green status. And so this is the... So this is from another school, but we have gotten all the equipment. And so we're getting it all set up this week. And so we'll start out the school year right away with this milk dispenser program. It'll reduce, you know, milk carton waste. So that will pretty much go away. And then it just helps reduce the liquid milk waste as well because the kids, we educate the kids to, you know, take what they're going to drink versus taking a whole carton, taking two sips, and then pouring the rest of it down the drain. So all around, it's a great program. And so this one will get started at Butte Creek immediately. And in the meantime, we have also gotten a grant from Marion County to start the same program at the middle school. Marion County is actually granting it, sponsoring the whole program. So it will be, the grant, it covers the complete cost of all of the equipment for the middle school.
Oh, wow, cool.
Yeah, so, and that's about $4,500. So, yeah, so we're... So I was very excited that Marion County was, wanted to come on board with that too. So, and they're excited. We're hoping that when they get the milk dispenser brought in, then we will have some publicity, some media publicity coverage for those two programs. So the gal from Clackamas County is actually going to come the first couple of days of school and be there and work with the kids. And then from Marion County, they'll do the same. same, come in and, because we do have to educate the kids a little bit about using machines, because it can be, so, because they have to learn how to carry a cup, because there's, everything is washable, so we have washable cups that we purchased, so there won't be, it will, you know, we're not purchasing, you know, cups that are being thrown away, they're going to be washed every day.
Wow.
Yeah, so, I'm very excited about that program, anyway. And then, middle school too, is also getting their green status, so this will go, go a lot of way, long ways with that, with their green certificate as well.
Suenan, are there ongoing costs with that after the, is the guy, I assume the grant has just mostly covered the equipment and things?
Yeah, the grant covers the equipment, and then, as far as the food service program, we just purchased the milk that goes inside of it, so there's no, no.
So, after that, there's no?
No, and actually, it will, in the long run, it will help reduce food cost, because the kids, you know, pour themselves less milk, and then we do, and of course, then it helps on your garbage bill too, because you don't have all those hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of cartons in the garbage can that are not recyclable any longer.
They're not.
Mm-hmm, so, anyway, so we're excited to get this, this program going, and hopefully, maybe, you know, move down the road, be able to get it into a few more of the schools. So, another program that we're starting this year is Community Roots is coming on board with Food Service Program.
Oh, wow.
So, we are starting in September for lunch program for them, and we are in the process of hiring somebody right now, and they'll be under our umbrella as far as the cook that, you know, has that school, and then she, you know, we fix the food, so we'll have a cook at that school, and we're ready, we're ready to rock and roll. So, we're excited that they were, they wanted to come on board and join our program. So, it'll be nice for their students, because in the program that they've had in the last few years was, they were contracting a food service company, but they only got cold food, and so now they'll have all the same options that kids in our district have, hot food and cold food.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you. It was a nice, nice addition. So, this year, for the first time, Silver Falls School District Food Service will be participating in the, it's called DOD Fresh Fruit Program, and that is a program that is sponsored by the Oregon Department of Defense, and it's part of the commodity program, and it's fresh fruit and vegetable program along with that. And so, we will be participating in that program, and we have been awarded $11,869 this year to go towards that program. And so, I gave you all the information, I don't know how much you want me to read, but it's a program that was started by the Department of Defense in 1994, and it was piloted in eight states, and as of 2013, schools in 46 states participate in it. And it's a program that the Department of Defense sponsors, and so what we do is we order our produce through our local produce vendor, but the dollars that pay for that, it comes from this grant for that program. So, and there are, I just today actually went on several times, because you have to sign up and, because you have to order your produce a little bit different route, different way, and I went and looked at it, and there are, it's nice, because there are some other choices, and, but it's nice, because your, the grocery list that I look at, it'll point, pick out things, and it'll identify the local produce that's available versus, you know, stuff that's from further away like California. But all the produce from this program is just from the United States. They're not, they're not going to be, you know, sending us stuff from, out of Mexico or, you know, other places that, you know, there's times where we get produce from other countries and stuff. So, that's a nice, that's a nice program, but I was, I was happy to be able to apply for this program and was awarded that, so it'll be a nice addition to our food service program.
Is this going to cover all of the schools in our district, or is it just?
It is, it will go, you know, overall, the $11,000 will only take us maybe halfway through the school year, if I was ordering just straight from that program.
Right, yeah.
And so, I will be kind of selective as far as, because there are stuff that, when I looked at pricing, there's still stuff that I can get just regular, from, from the vendor, less expensive than what the, this program offers, and so you're, you know, costing out a little bit too, so I want to always get the best bang for a buck as far as, and stuff, but it's just a nice, it's a nice advantage to have, and it's, and it's nice to have the extra dollars to, you know, apply to the program. So, that, so we're excited about that, anyway. So, I have a few things I did not put in the, in the report. Again, this year, we had a successful program at the high school, working with the transition program, the girls in the, we had about three students from the transition program that worked in the kitchen all year and did a great job, anyway. And so, we're going to do that program again this year with some new students, and it's a great opportunity for those kids to get some work experience as well as just learning some good living skills.
Yeah.
And so, that's really, that was a fun program that we were able to start this year. Summer, I did that already. So, overall, I just want to talk a little bit about our participation this year. We had, our overall participation was down a little bit this year. It's easier for me just to say, our average daily participation was down about 23 meals a day. With that being said, our free and reduced percentages were down, so we had less participation in the free and reduced category, which would make sense, or we had, because we had about 170 less students qualify for free and reduced. I think our economy is just better this year, and so consequently, you have, you know, if you have less students that qualify for free and reduced, you're going to have, you know, less students that eat in that category. But that being said, we picked up a few more though in the paid category, so that was good. So, we were down overall a little over 2,000 meals in the free and reduced category, but we picked up about 500 to 600 meals in the paid category for kids that got switched over. But all in all, it was, it was, you know, pretty close, you know, as far as, like I said, it just, when you have, when your numbers fluctuate, especially in your free and reduced categories, you're going to have some fluctuation in your meal participation. But overall, and just our food service revenue, and not, this is not labor, unfortunately, but our food service revenue, we did have an increase of about $48,000 this year over last year.
Oh, good.
Anyway, and that's, and that's your revenue from your student, you know, participation is then your federal revenue that you get for your meals, your reimbursement.
So, we raised prices last year?
Correct.
And how did the students do and families do with that?
And that possibly could have been a little bit of the reduction in, you know, in participation as well, but overall, you know, when it was, you know, like I said, our daily participation was only down about 23 students.
Twenty-three, yeah, okay.
So, you know, you don't, it's, it's, you know, and I'm hoping, there's other things that I do, we're always generating to try to increase, you know, participation, but in this district, the kids really, especially at the high school level, the kids love those grab-and-go things that are not a reimbursable meal, so we're always trying to, you know, improve our reimbursable meals, but we're still drawing revenue off of the kids that come through and just, they just want a piece of pizza, or they just want, you know, they want something that is, they're, you know, buying food that, but it's not a reimbursable meal, but, you know, every penny counts.
Is there an increase in kids doing the grab-and-go that you've seen over the years?
Um, well, yeah.
Are you still seeing a consistent, you know, going through and getting food, you know, that's hot or cold, you know?
Yeah, no, I mean, there, just because I, we've, I've continued, I've continually built on the grab-and-go stuff.
Oh, okay.
And, because the thing is, is if you don't have it at all, then you're still losing that revenue.
Right.
Because there's, you know, I, you know, occasionally I'll go to Safeway, or I'll go to some of the other outsourced, you know, places that kids could, the high school kids could go during lunchtime, and there is, because of being open campus, there is a, you know, there's a percentage that do go out for lunch and stuff, and so, you know, whether I hit Safeway, or look at Safeway, or go to the drive-throughs, you know, there's, there's that percentage of kids that are, you know, going to go out for those meals at lunchtime, so.
Okay.
So, we just, we're always trying to, you know, think of, you know, some food items, food choices that could generate interest for the kids. So, just making sure I have everything. So, and then, just to help too with the families that do qualify for free and reduced, we do track participation for that, those categories, and so about mid-October, we look at the students that are not participating that do qualify to eat for no charge, and so we have a letter that we send home to families, just to make them aware that their students are not participating. We really try not to, if they're participating even, you know, once or twice a week, but there's a certain percentage of the kids that don't participate at all, when they could be have eating for no charge. And so, we have a very nice letter that we send home to families, just making parents aware that their students are not participating, and that they can encourage, you know, that they can encourage their kids to participate, and then, then if there's anything, you know, if they have suggestions, or, you know, if there's a reason why they're not participating, we'd love to hear about it.
Are you seeing that a lot of the, at certain schools, or is there more?
Uh, no, actually, our, which is typical, our biggest least participation is a high school.
Yeah.
And that, but that's, that's.
There's no increase in like the rural schools or anything, or?
No, our, our great rural schools all participate pretty well, yeah, they're, so do, does anyone have any questions?
Actually, I've got a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, I think that's kind of cool about bringing in Republic Services, you know, into the free lunch program for the kids, but whose idea was that?
To bring, to ask Republic Services to come in? I did.
That's cool. Now, is this the first time you've done that?
Yeah, for them, yeah, for that group.
Okay.
Yeah, last summer, we had some taste testings from some different, you know, groups and stuff, but this summer, I was just trying to think of something a little bit different, you know, and stuff, and so, yeah, no, I called them.
Anytime you dig a piece of equipment like that, you know, for the kids to kind of climb in and out of, that's, that's a playground right there.
Yeah.
Lunch and a playground, yeah.
Yeah.
And another question I had is, you'll have to forgive me, I don't associate the Department of Defense with fruits and vegetables. So, I'm looking at the DOD, and then, so, this is fantastic that we get to participate, what's in it for them?
Honestly, I don't know, because when I actually, because the information comes to us through emails and through ODE and stuff like that, and through the Child Nutrition Program, and so I actually went on too, because I, when I found out who sponsored it too, and that was the same thing in my eyes, like, Department of Defense, what did they have to do with, so?
So, we're not playing like simulated war games with fruits and vegetables, right?
No.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, I don't think so. No, I was actually really surprised too, I, I, actually, the information I put on the PowerPoint is as much information as I have.
Just trying to avoid that cattle of hand grenade.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think so. No, I was just surprised too, I was like, how did they get involved in food?
Sure.
Fruits and vegetables, but, you know, it's great.
Yeah, that's pretty, and then my last question is, you know, you mentioned about those grab-and-go items?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I think we're seeing societal trends, that everything is convenience, speed, and quick and easy. When you go in a Safeway, it's about less selling individual items, but prepackaged. So, you mentioned that you're always trying to find things maybe to compete, maybe to keep our kids more in-house.
Yeah.
How much flexibility on that do you have? And then, what about feedback? Do you ask for feedback from our student population? I mean, where do you get any ideas from, and maybe?
Yeah, well.
Catch something that's going to be closer to what they're looking for?
Yeah, yeah.
That's going to be the guidelines.
Yeah, we do have, we do have focus groups and stuff like that. We do have a program that is new this year, where we go give the kids cameras, and then they go around and take pictures of the things they like and things they don't like, you know, and give us feedback on that. And so, that's something that we're going to be having at the high school and the middle school this year. But for the most part, it's just, you know, yeah, we have, across the state, we have, you know, groups that go out and talk to, you know, kids from all over the state, and find out what they, you know, what would do to, you know, bring, you know, service to our program, you know, participation and stuff, and, yeah, the kids, you know, I think we're on the right track as far as, you know, we hear that they want fresh stuff, they want stuff that's homemade, but then there's, you know, part of them, but then there's the other side too, that wants stuff that they can just grab quick and walk, you know, and take it out, or, and so, it's a balance of finding, you know, what, like, or what pleases everyone.
Yeah, cool.
So, that's why we, you know, try to offer a little bit of, you know, both sides of it.
Thanks.
Suenan, I'm always impressed when you come with your reports with all the new, with the different new programs you start, and all the, the grants you find to fund, I mean, every time, every year you come, or a couple of times a year, you come and tell us about two or three grants you've found to start different programs.
Thank you.
So, thank you for doing that.
I appreciate that.
For always trying to increase, you know, the programs for kids and nutrition for kids and.
Thank you, I, it's a lot of fun. I did mention, I forget two things. The grant we got last year for a new oven for Silver Crest, yay, it's finally been installed.
Oh, good.
Yes, I'm excited about that. So, we got that, that got put in right after school, got out this year, and then we had, also, we, the maintenance budgeted in for a brand-new dishwasher, it's at Robert Frost, and that is being put in as we speak, so.
Good.
It's very, yes, it's nice to get some new stuff once in a while.
Yeah, for sure. Okay.
Suenan, I just want to say kudos for supporting the existing school initiative at Butte Creek and Silverton Middle School.
Oh, it's my pleasure.
Good luck with the milk dispenser. There will be a learning curve.
Yes, there will be.
Yeah, there will be a learning curve.
There will be. No, I'm excited, I am actually really excited about that. It has, I went to Canby right at, towards the end of the school year last year. Canby is, was kind of the first district in Oregon that actually put a couple in their school district, and so, we had a little field trip up there, and so we asked a lot of questions, and, but they said it wasn't bad. The kids learned, you know, just within a few days, and they said, I said, everybody's all nervous about spills, you know, because they're going to be putting milk in a cup, you know, and they, and they said, you know what, they said, there's really not any more spills than if they were just ready, going to dump their tray, you know? So, I was, that was nice to hear.
Good.
You know, kids are very flexible, kids learn very quickly, we don't give them enough credit for how quickly they catch on to, to different things, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, financial report, Steve.
Thank you, Tom.
Food service rates for.
Yeah, so before we look at the financial statement a little closer, to piggyback on Suenan's presentation, on the lunch prices specifically, ODE has a PLE, or Paid Lunch Equity Tool, that has to be run every year to determine if they are going to require districts to increase their lunch, meal prices for the paid, well, and reduced. And we were in that position last year, and of course, we did, as we just discussed, increase the lunch prices last year. We did not do that the year before. This year, in running that tool, we are not required to. Of course, we could, but obviously, it would, it would help, you know, it's a challenge, as you know, as we talk about quite a bit, you know, running an operating deficit, but we were already on the higher end of the scale with, with, with the food prices, and we talked about last year, trying not to do this every year, actually kind of matching it up with the legislative session and the pers rate increases in the odd number of years, so that would be for next, you know, not this upcoming year, but the year after, so, I think you have the sheet there in front of you, just to refresh you where our prices are now, but the recommendation would be to not increase for the 18, 19 school year. On the financial statement side of things, what you have in front of you tonight is a preliminary, un-audited financial statement through June, June 30th, just for the general fund for 2017-18. Again, it's preliminary, we're still closing the books, we still have a few invoices trickling in, some accounts receivable, we're on a modified accrual basis, so it takes the better part of two months to get everything closed up. That's why there's not an all-fund statement, there's just a lot of, still some things to finish reviewing and reconciling, but I do feel comfortable with a preliminary general fund statement. June's always the month where, the one month of the year where we have very little revenue and a lot of expenses, because the state school fund payments go from July through May, and then we have three payrolls at the end of the year. But overall, for the year, we did hit just shy of $44 million in revenue, including our beginning fund balance, and so we're 103% of revenue, so that's, we performed a little bit better, but most of that has to do with the fact that, again, the state decided to fund, the state school fund based on a 50-50 split for this biennium rather than a 49-51. I sound like a broken record on that.
[laughing].
But other than that, it would have been, you know, it would have been closer to what we budgeted, but we're, we're over, which is fine, because it puts a little money in the bank earlier for LGIP interest earnings, so. And as you, if you get to the bottom there, you can see on the net operating change line item, our, right now, our projected earning fund balance is just a tick over $5.7 million. Again, that went up this year, again, because of the 50-50 funding model, we didn't expect that obviously when we started the year, but as we go into next year, obviously, that'll, that'll start to drop, and fortunately, you know, we'll be looking at the same pers rates this year, we do have a COLA in our contract, and that was. And fortunately, the, you know, we'll be looking at the same pers rates this year. We do have a, a COLA in our contract, and that was budgeted for. But, uh, um, as we expected, uh, this, this biennium will, you know, when it's all said and done with the end of last year, that, that number should drop. And then, of course, we're looking at another, a set of pers rate increases for nineteen, twenty-one. So anyway, overall, not, not too bad. You can see the, uh, the shading doesn't turn out on the, on your, uh, colored, uh, paper here, but it does have asterisks next to them, just a reminder of the items that, that feed into the state school fund, all the, the local revenue items, as well as the state school fund itself. So I just wanted, uh, in, on the second page, I believe, second or third page, I included a, a copy of the last estimate we have, uh, from ODE for the state school fund for seventeen, eighteen. You can see at the bottom of the, the financial statement, we're real close to what that projection is. That will, of course, also change, uh, before, by the time we get to next May, when they do our final adjustment. But, uh, but, but we're, we're pretty much right in line with what we expected there, so. And then next month, I'll, um, I'll have a, uh, projected, uh, all-fund statement for seventeen, eighteen, as well as July and August eighteen, nineteen. Kind of our first month, we'll take a look at eighteen, nineteen. And there's not much going on in July, uh, in terms of, uh, uh, not a lot, not a lot of people here, so it's a small payroll. But we do get a double state school fund payments to start, to start us off the year well, so that always helps, so. Anyhow, that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Questions for Steve?
Steve, how, um, how much changes are actually in the state managed timber revenue fund?
That's a great question. That, that, that one is, the, the line item is, it could be great. It could be, uh, especially if you live in more of a timber district, so to speak. But, uh, we could get anything from zero to, you can see this year, we actually received, uh, what, thirty, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand and, uh, excuse me, I'm on the wrong line, three hundred and thirty-two thousand in, in timber revenue. We budgeted zero to be conservative. It's really just part of the local revenue that, that, uh, you know, common school, county school funds, federal timber revenue, state timber revenue, and property taxes. So, you know, whatever the state says we get for total formula revenue, they'll deduct that, and we try to estimate it, and they'll give us the difference. We ended up with a little more local revenue than we projected, mainly because of the property taxes, but also with the state's timber. But that just means that we'll owe a little bit back in May. But, but again, that estimate's going to change a little bit, once they reconcile everything. And all hundred ninety-eight school districts kind of have an impact on each other. But to answer the question specifically on state timber, it is very interesting. It's impossible to project, because it has to do with the contracts that are out there between the, the state and these, uh, these, these, these organizations that are cutting on state lands. And, um, they don't, they don't even know. If you recall the county and say, okay, what do you, what do you project, you know, for, for, you know, for this year? And they can't even tell you, because they don't know when the contracts are going to close. So, you know, but it doesn't technically add anything more to our, it's part of the total state school fund pot, in terms of our total, total formula revenue, which is why I put that, you know, that total of all those items on the bottom, in terms of where it relates to our projection. We might get a little more of this and a little less of that, but it all kind of, you know, kind of comes out, uh, to the total formula revenue in the end.
Well, I just know timber is really high and spin high, so that's why I wonder how much it actually fluctuates.
It can, uh, quite, uh, you know, I, I used, used to work at the, the Saniam Canyon School District, and, and that's, you know, right up in the timber area, both for federal and state. And it could be, you know, up there, you know, a district with only seven hundred kids, it, it could be anywhere from a hundred thousand to a million dollars, even in a district like that. We don't have as much of that, you know, obviously going on in our, in our district. But, uh, yeah, it was, it was larger than normal this year.
Thank you.
Couple of school districts in the North Oregon coast range are funded nearly exclusively by state forest revenues, still to this day. It's pretty rare, unlike it was here in the seventies, even eighties, where there was a pretty significant amount of state revenue from state forests.
Yeah, one of those districts is the Jewel School District, aptly named. And so if, if your, if your local revenue exceeds what your state school fund total formula revenue is, um, you actually get to keep the excess. The state's not giving anything out of the state school fund from, from the income tax revenue throughout the state. You, you actually get to keep, keep that, um, in that particular case, so. But it could be a, a roller coaster ride as well, but the whole budget, so, anyway.
We need to start encouraging some timber tracks.
Steve, I'm glad, I'm kind of, I'm glad to see there's no increase in lunch prices. I think that'll help families and kids. But do you expect much change in the bottom line?
No, I don't.
Food prices aren't expected to skyrocket or anything?
Oh, uh, yeah, I don't know what the food price trend is, but, you know, issues that we have, you know, have to do with, I mean, obviously, it's always great if you can increase participation rates, but there's a lot going on with that, as Siuan mentioned, but obviously, the, kind of the labor model we have is our, you know, probably our, you know, our, our biggest obstacle, especially with, you know, with, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Steve?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Moving on, board reports. Anything?
You want to speak first, Jen?
No, you should speak first.
I was going to put you on the hot seat first, okay.
Don't, don't tell him any lies about what I, might have happened.
Um, so, uh, every year, the, uh, the Oregon School Board Association, the OSBA, puts on what's called the Summer Camp. And it's a three-day conference meant for board members for, uh, knowledge on current issues, upcoming issues, kind of a look back where we've come from, where we are, and where we're going. And we have the opportunity to enroll in classes that we feel we better ourselves as board members constantly, that evolving process. So for myself, I focused on three major areas. One was, uh, board self-evaluation, uh, the superintendent evaluation, and then poverty in schools. What excites me is about going to the conference like this is we're meeting school board members from all across the state of Oregon. We're able to talk to other superintendents. We're looking at the State of the Union with other districts. And I know I may sound like a broken record to some, but coming out of that conference, it just enforces who we are, how well we function as a district, our schools, our board, our administration. There is a lot of dysfunction out there, which granted, we're not always going to agree. We don't have the same philosophy, the same background. We don't interpret things the same way, but it's amazing how we can all come together for the betterment of the kids, our students, our children, you know, our community. So, uh, it just reinforces who we are in Silver Falls. But for me, what I really walked away from, and the thing that really stuck with me, is one of the classes I took was called Disrupting Poverty, Turning High Poverty Schools Into High Performing Schools. Now, one of the things you don't associate Silver Falls School District, or Silverton, or our area is, is with poverty. And for me, really not really having the full grasp of poverty as far as, I always thought of it as financial poverty. But what I took away from the class, it's not financial poverty. That's one small element. The key thing is for me, it's poverty in regard to family structure. You know, there's a lot of families that don't have that strong family structure. Social and a friend network. We don't always have a strong social network of friends. And, and that shows up in some of the issues in the outland communities. Lack of a mentor. A lot of the kids don't have a strong mentor in their lives that can guide them through life and throughout their years as a, you know, young adolescent. Structure or discipline. There is poverty in lack of structure, lack of discipline. And again, that shows up. And the last one was self-esteem. You know, so all those areas are included as what's considered poverty. Now, when I look at those issues, and I look back at the three years now that I've served as a board member, and all the years my children have gone to school, and I've been able to participate, you know, with the, uh, various functions and meeting with administrators and teachers, you know, I see that we're ahead of the curve. I see that anytime there's been an issue or a conversation in these areas, I think we've done a phenomenal job of addressing these. But I also know that it's an ongoing issue, and it's something that is, or I believe that we're well aware of. And we can always strive to do better, and we hear that from the community, as well as a lot of the concerns. But for me, I think that we are on the, on the right page. We're moving in the right direction. We're addressing these. We're cognizant of the fact that we need to be better at these, so that our children, when they leave our school district, they have the base foundation of young adults to strive and succeed. So that was my takeaway, uh, from the convention that the OSBA offers. And every year, for me, it just makes me not only a better school board member, at least in my opinion. I would hope, right? But it just makes me a better person. So I really appreciate the opportunity to attend in that, so. And Andy does a good job of making sure that we have that, that opportunity, so we are a cohesive, strong board. So thank you very much for that, Andy. And then lastly, I do want to say, for those of you that don't know, it's Jennifer Trager's birthday today.
Oh, God.
So, yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to end with that. Happy birthday, Jennifer.
Thank you.
They were debating whether to sing, but.
I am dedicated, though, I'm here tonight.
You are dedicated.
I, I do, do, as well as Ron, I really appreciated the opportunity to go to, um, the Bend Conference, and I definitely think it, um, makes us better board members when we go. I too went with Ron to the Disrupting Poverty Day. It was a day-long, uh, learning session. And the things that I took away from that speaker, who was an expert, and from the keynote speaker the next day, his name was Phil Gore, was that our work as a board is important, and it will improve student outcomes the more intentional that we are. So intentionality really makes a difference. Teamwork really makes a difference. So those are the things that I really took away from both of those speakers, um, intentionality, teamwork. Phil Gore has a book that has all the secrets to how to be a good board. And so I have not looked into ordering that book, because I think that it probably makes a difference if, if we all were going to read such a book. Oh, he, Ron said, yeah, so he's, he's on board too.
Hey, I'm drinking the Kool-Aid. I'm with you right there.
Yeah, um, and one of the things that Phil Gore, um, said that really made a difference for me is that, um, well, kind of like, you know, Tim's really thinks that it's important for us during the board report time to talk about positive things that happen in the district. And that, I think it was echoed by Phil Gore, and he added like even bigger, or not bigger, a layer on top of that, to make it in, one of those intentional things that might be related to something like our strategic plan, or something that we remind ourselves of on a regular basis that, um, was, is a positive outcome, that, that we can see where that generated, what the genesis of that was. So, so positive things that are happening all the time, but maybe we can just be more intentional about, you know, asking Andy to report on that or something. I, I don't, I don't know, but, um, that seemed to be like a really important takeaway from, from all of that. So, um, anyway, thanks for giving us the opportunity. It's a really great opportunity for learning.
Thank you for going.
Oh, and another really important thing, um, Andy, I know you'll remember, what's the name of the group, the legislative group, the Joint Committee on School?
On Student Success.
Student Success. So there were, um, two members of that joint committee who spoke to us during the lunch, and they seemed really very hopeful. Well, first of all, they reported all the things that we know are going on in the state. Like, they've heard from everybody, and they're still going and collecting the data. But they hear what we hear from you, and they, they know what's going on. So I felt really confident that they were getting, uh, you know, hearing people. But what was really great is that, um, those two members of the committee are very hopeful that there'll be, um, a bill introduced in the two thousand nineteen legislative session that will change the way that schools are funded, that, um, it will include maybe some more accountability, but, um, it will hopefully get us closer to the QEM model. And that sounded really quite hopeful, and so that was bright, a very bright spot for me during the conference.
Okay, any other board reports? Okay, correspondence? Have we had any?
Nothing that you haven't received.
Okay. Okay, a second audience of visitors. Would anyone like to address the board tonight in regards to discussion and action items? Okay, we do have one action item, and that's the appointment of the Zone Six School Board Member. So, any more discussion before we move deeper into this?
I just wanted to thank again the applicants. Thank you for coming and, um, participating in the process. It's, it's refreshing, and I, I really do appreciate your time coming.
Anything else, or are we ready to move to a nomination? Jennifer, did you want to hear people's leanings?
Yeah, I just, it, it made sense to me that we would talk a little bit about where we're headed.
Specific.
So that we don't make a motion that fails, you know, that, that, but that's just me.
Okay. Would anyone like to give their leanings? Which way you're, which person you're.
Well, I'll, I'll jump off, yeah, I'll jump off the cliff. It, it does, for me, this is, I'm only speaking for me and not as for the entire board. I think it does put maybe Demet Warren at a slight disadvantage for not being here in person to be able to talk to her, get some questions, kind of get a feel for exactly where she comes as far as the different areas that we've addressed tonight. Very strong candidate. I met her early on, three years ago, and she had some really good things to say, but that was three years ago. So that makes it a little bit difficult, disappointed with, with not being able to kind of hear some of her viewpoints. So with that being said, you know, as far as with Sheldon and Jonathan, not looking forward to trying to make this decision. And really, it's a tough one. Um, I'm happy with either candidate, but, uh, we can't bring both on and do like a round robin every other month. We can't do that, can we?
Yeah.
Good round robin.
Kind of tag team, like a wrestling match, right? Luchadores. Yeah, that's a tough one. So at that point, I've, I've been able to maybe reduce it by one, but I'm still struggling.
Okay. I probably lean towards Jonathan mostly because just of his experience in the dish, with the district-involved stuff over the last, over the years. So that's just my, nothing against Sheldon at all, it's just.
I think, I think, I've already said this before, but, um, I, I'm, it, it is a tough decision. But I, I am leaning towards Jonathan Edmonds. You know, when I read this, this page right here, um, I've highlighted not everything that I want to, but the language that he uses on here indicates to me that he, um, really knows a lot about what, how districts are run. He's been on many tasks for, task forces. He was the president of PTT for fifteen years. He had his, his actual job outside as a software development manager. The, the things that he does for his position at Xerox, um, also gives me a strong, uh, confidence that he could really look at things in a perspective that, um, could benefit us on the board and have good discussions. The other thing I wanted to say about that is, um, you know, one thing that stuck out to me was, you know, after being a manager at Xerox for several years, he had changed who he was. He had grown a lot. He had understood how to manage people. Um, each person is different. And, um, that to me has a person that's very open-minded, um, and can deal with, um, complex issues that we have. And I, and Tim, when you brought up the, um, the behavioral issues among our children, I agree with you on that. We just had a large discussion about that and talked a lot with Jennifer Hannon about implementing, you know, curriculum in our district for social and emotional awareness, and he's aware of that. So that, I, I don't know. I just, I feel like we could, I don't, it's, yeah, that's.
Anything else? Okay, is there, do I have a motion? Is there an appointment of a Zone Six School Board Member?
I'd like to nominate Jonathan Edmonds. Is that how we do it?
Yes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been, Jonathan Edmonds has been nominated and seconded for, to fill the Zone Six School Board Member position. I think we should probably do a hand vote, just to make it a little, make it very clear for Debbie. Um, all in favor of Jonathan Edmonds for this position? Raise your hand, please. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay, opposed?
Tim, I'll be part of it.
Okay, four to one, so we have, we have a majority, so Jonathan, congratulations, I guess?
Congratulations.
No, no, congratulations, Jonathan, we'll swear you in at our work session in a week and hit the ground running, so. And also, Sheldon and Danette, thank you for throwing your names in the, in the ring, and please keep coming to our meetings, please make your, make your opinions known, because that's what we need to hear, we need to hear from people, and all different, all opinions we need to hear, so please come and make your position, your positions on different issues known to us, so we can more be effective board members and throw your hat in the ring next spring.
Yeah, do it.
Yeah.
There will be opportunities coming up to public participation.
Right.
For the commitment to your participation.
For sure, okay.
Thank you.
Great. So, we will, right now, we're going to move adjourn from regular session, move into executive session, I have to read this whole thing, and it's kind of long, so usually, people get up and leave when I start reading this, so you can do whatever you want to do, but we're going to move into executive session under ORS 192.6602H to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed, and ORS 192.6602B to consider the dismissal or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent who does not request an open hearing, that being the Silver Falls Education Association grievance, and ORS 192.6602F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, Silver Falls Education Association grievance. So, we'll take a five-minute break, and we'll then move into executive session, so thank you for coming tonight, everyone.
Thank you.
We're going to adjourn out of executive session and move back into regular session regarding the grievance that we had before us, is there a motion?
I move to uphold the Level Two Superintendent Decision on the grade that's submitted on June 1st, 2018.
Is there a second? Second? And second, to uphold the grievance that's simply submitted on June 1st. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes, we uphold Andy's decision on the grievance, it was, he submitted a Level Two. So, with no further business, we're adjourned, thank you. Sorry for the late hour, thank you for staying light, you guys.